Breaking up some meetings in Jacksonville City Council. Council, you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting and I would entertain a motion to adopt that proposed agenda.
So move second.
Move motion and second. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Next, you have the minutes from the July 22, 2025 regular meeting and two consent items.
Move approval for the adoption of the minutes and the two consent items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. First item and only item on here for tonight's discussion is the street resurfacing update. Wally Hanson will be presenting that item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I want to talk to you about our street program. I think this is going to be something that becomes an annual discussion, probably right around this time. It fits well for the activities that we have going on with trying to take advantage of summer weather and although it hasn't been like this recently, drier weather for paving. So tonight, I want to jump into a couple of things. Some of these slides you'll have seen before, but we'll talk about our funding of our street program, how we use those funds, the ongoing projects and initiatives that we have, and then kind of where we're headed. So with that, I know you've seen this several times, but we fund our streets through the PAVO allocation. It is basically redistribution of the fuel tax that's collected. The state appropriation for FY25 was $186 million, and that was split over all of the municipalities that have streets. Basically, that distribution is based, is split by population and then by street mileage, and every year, we have to submit our street mileage. And then that has to be either sealed by an engineer or a surveyor. And in FY25, we received $2.2 million. That was our PAVO allocation. So with that allocation, what we do is we basically split that. It's split over the street division's PAVO maintenance budget, which is our, how we fund street maintenance. And that's used for things like pothole repair, patching, street improvements, where we do like skim patches or something like that. We do right-of-way maintenance, where we have mowing or removal vegetation, or we have to adjust intersections or something like that. We use it for drainage maintenance. We really limit our drainage maintenance dollars to street PAVO employees that are trying to clear storm drains in preparation for storms or rain events. Otherwise, most of our drainage maintenance, although PAVO-eligible, goes to our stormwater fund. And then we use it for other activities like crack seal. One of the things that we do internal is we do repair utility cuts. But if that utility cut is driven by water sewer infrastructure, then you cannot use PAVO funds. So we have to use other funding for that. And then the other half of that is what we put toward capital projects. And that's where our street repaving, our annual street repaving projects come into play. And then we also use it for pedestrian improvements. Familiar with our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan? We have an annual sidewalk or pedestrian improvement project identified. That's PAVO-funded. And then if we have ADA requirements that we have to meet, either in accordance with our street paving, because if we pave a street that has a sidewalk adjacent to it, we have to adjust the handicap ramps and make sure that they are ADA compatible. And then we identify other places that we need to address ADA. So we have money set aside for those. The city has 166.5 miles of city streets that we maintain with our PAVO allocation. We have 47 miles of DOT streets, and those are kind of our major roadways that most people would be familiar with. You know, Henderson Drive, Western Boulevard, Gun Branch Road, Bell Fork Road, Country Club Drive, Harget Street. You know, our major arterials are actually DOT streets. That definitely helps us when we're looking at how far we can spread our PAVO allocation. And then we have 19 miles of private streets. Most of those are in subdivisions. For example, Williams Farm, the gated subdivision, all of those streets are private. We have several private roads like Arnold, I think it's Arnold off of, oh no, I'm sorry, Monk Lane. Monk Lane off of Country Club Road. So we have several private streets around the city that make up a total of 19 miles. In 2023, we did a pavement assessment. We hired Fugro to come in and essentially drive our streets with a van that was less subjective than the human method. We had used previous, previously of grading streets. We actually ended up with a tool that identified the different types of distresses in our streets and then assigned a severity to that. Along with that, we got a report, and I know we discussed that report at one of your budget workshops. And basically, what the report identified is, in order to maintain the current PCI, we needed to spend somewhere around $5 million per year. And then it provided recommendations on how to, how to break up that spending. So what I'll say is, on a staff, staff reviewed that report, and I apologize, staff reviewed that report, and we feel that it underrated some of our streets because we went out and looked at some of those streets that they had rated. And we feel like the rating may be slightly lower than it probably could have been. So we're hoping to find that when we do the next street rating, we have multiple reports to compare to. This is just, I know you've seen this several times, so this is about 10-second slide. We grade from zero to 100 and basically failed to brand-new pavement, right? So where we fell in that Fugro report was a 58, which is the top end of fair, 60, or sorry, top end of poor, 60 is fair. So we were right below that, we're right at that fair to poor line with our street grade. And of course, that's an average across the whole city. So we have some streets that grade out as 100 because they're brand-new or just been repaved. And some streets like DeWitt Street, that I'll talk about in a minute, where every segment is failed and below a 20. So that's a, that's an average across the whole city. What I'll do is jump into some of the ongoing street projects that we have, and I'll actually dive into these in a little more detail. But the, the projects that we have ongoing are the 2425 street paving project. And if you recall, what we did is we took FY24 and FY25 and combined those projects, combined the funding, trying to get a larger project that would compete better on the bid market. And then we brought to you a Cape Seal project. This is a pilot project. We are going to try this. We haven't done it before, and I'll go into that one a little more, but we do have those streets selected. And then with our street maintenance dollars, we actually had some extra funds that we had not spent in FY25. So we put together a street division initiative where we did some extra paving. And we have the DeWitt Street project. I'll give you an update on the North Bay Shore project. Both of those are related to infrastructure, primarily sewer failures. And then we'll talk about what we plan to do moving forward. So the FY2425 street project, we did a total of five and a half miles for roughly $2.5 million. So, and I'll give you a per-mile breakdown in just a minute, so you can see what that looks like. But here's the list of streets that we've completed so far. We, remember, we do street segments. We don't do whole streets. So for example, a couple of years ago, we did Coal Drive. We did from, you know, Coal Drive, we did from Harget Street to Armstrong. And then we'll come back and pick up the rest. We do that based on recommendations from the report, how those streets grade out, and then what the infrastructure looks like underneath.
I recommend the rest.
And we do have some infrastructure improvements that we'll need to make along that section, which is why we did the first section, segment first. But it is on our, one of our upcoming lists to look at. So this is the, the streets. I won't read all of those to you, but you can see that those are street segments. A lot of times, you'll see streets, which you'll see somewhere on this list, as Huff Drive. We're doing like three segments of Huff Drive because they are graded the worst, and we had the least infrastructure improvements that we need to do along that section. And quite honestly, if we tried to pave Huff Drive from end to end, it would probably take us two years' worth of our streets projects to get that done. So we do try to spread out our streets projects to hit key areas. We do that through an evaluation process. We basically have an internal team that evaluates the streets using the report. That team consists of members from engineering, members from the streets division, members from the transportation division, that all come together, and the utilities division, that all come together, identify streets that we're going to evaluate. And a lot of times, what we end up with is a long list of streets to evaluate, and utilities knocks a lot of them off. So it gets real hard to say, you know, we'll, we'll pick up Coal Drive a year from now, right? It, we have to go evaluate all the utilities, see how long it'll take us to program, get those utilities repaired, and then come back and pave. The remaining streets we have, and actually, some of these, we have actually worked on, like Eaton Drive has been milled but not paved. New River Drive has been milled and paved since I put this slide together, and it's going to be one of my examples of some of the challenges that we run into. But real quickly, this is kind of some of the challenges that we've run into just on this project alone. On the left, you'll see Carver Road, which is in Bell Fork Homes. Carver Road, as we were milling, the milling machine literally fell through the pavement, which tells you that the subgrade is bad. And we had to completely dig up a portion of the subgrade from, and I forget the streets out there. It may have been from Kit to Coal. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So obviously, that's not something that we have planned as part of that project. So that ends up being money that has to be added in to take care of that project. Or we look at areas where maybe we didn't use as much base somewhere, so we'll move that money into that line item to handle the base failures. Greenford Place, we also had problems with. The picture you see there is right after the asphalt's been milled. Our program is to mill one inch and put back one and a half inches of asphalt. The plan there is that by milling one inch, we should have two inches of asphalt on our streets. That is the city's requirement for placement of asphalt, and has been as long as I've been here. So it predates me, and I've been here over 20 years. But the problem is, if you look at Greenford Place, you see, well, there's some asphalt there, but there's a lot of what looks to be dirt or rock there. There wasn't two inches of asphalt. So we ended up having to go back with, make some base repairs there as well, and then we'll get that repaved. And then you have situations like New River Drive, which we always hate. New River Drive, this is right near the school's playground. Actually, the two cones are in front of the fence to the playground. We milled, we ran a proof roll over what we milled, which is a fully loaded dump truck, and we looked for movement in the base. It passed proof roll, so we came through, we paved it, we ran the roller across it, which does have vibration to it. And about two days later, this little hole started to develop, and it looked almost like a perfectly round hole. And then it's hard to see in the picture, but right above where you see the rock, you can actually see the depression in the asphalt.
Sinkhole there?
So there's a sinkhole there. We went back and re-camera the sewer, because we, we had camered it before we paved it. We did re-camera the sewer. It had been lined. So we think what had happened is that at some point in the past, there was an issue there. We lined the sewer, took care of the issue, but over time, that dirt below the street kind of made its way into the sewer line, created a void. Well, all those years, the asphalt kind of bridged that void, but by the time we had run a roller over top of the new asphalt, we started filling in that void. So where you see the white lines, we'll have located. We'll have to cut that completely out. We'll dig it out, and then we'll bring it back up, and we'll repave that section. So unfortunately, that brand-new road is going to have a short section where we'll have joints because we have to go back and fix that area.
How far down on Carver Road is this? Is this like in the middle?
It was, it, basically, it was from Coal Drive to that next, whatever that next cross street is. And I apologize, I don't remember what that.
Kit, probably.
Kit. I think it's Kit, but.
So it's like when you first turn it?
Coal to Armstrong. It was to Armstrong.
Yeah, when you come in off Harget Street and take.
Right.
Okay, so when you're first coming in.
When you, right, when you turn right in, and then it's right there on the right side is where that happened.
And it was the whole right lane. The left lane was actually okay. The whole right lane was the problem.
Return his house, right.
And for, to those, to those residents' credit, they were very patient with us. I mean, they, they watched what happened. We had to come back and take, I think we ended up taking 10 inches or so out and put in 10 inches of rock back to get it to pass proof roll. So as you can imagine, that took several weeks. Moving to our Cape, any, any questions about our project, our major project? So moving to Cape Seal, we have the Cape Seal Pilot Project. I came to you just short of a year ago and asked for money to move forward, and unfortunately, this project has taken us longer than we would have liked it to. It has been rebid twice. The first time, we had trouble getting bidders because they didn't like the list of roads that we selected. Even when we tried to explain that what we were doing was selecting roads with varying grades, they were concerned because they knew at certain, that certain roads we picked, their surface wasn't going to hold up the amount of time it should. So what they were saying is we were creating a project that was going to fail right out of the gate. What we tried to explain is, we're trying to see how long that product would last in that scenario. Because we do have streets, and a great example is DeWitt Street, where we know we need to do something, and that street's going to continue to fail, but we need to bridge the gap between the amount of time it takes to program, design, redo the infrastructure, and then come back and repave. So we were trying to figure out how long this product might buy us in different situations. But a company that has, that's responsible for their product is also worried about, well, what happens if Wally's not here to explain that that's what we tried to do three years from now, and that product has failed. So we did have, we did, we ended up working through that, and the first time, the second time it came back, it was over budget. So we worked with, we only had one bidder, so we worked with that bidder. And we ended up deciding on the list of streets, and I have that list of streets on the next slide. And we rebid it for yet again a third time, and we got bids in, and it was just slightly over our budget of $250,000. And the bidder worked with us to get the streets we wanted to write under $250,000. So we have no leeway in this project, so it is what it is. So we're literally spending about every dollar that we have available for this project. But we're able to get a total of 1.6 miles. And again, they did agree to vary the different grades of streets. We have streets that have low traffic, high traffic, truck traffic, curb and gutter, and then strip pavement. And then even a cul-de-sac on there, so we can see how it handles in a cul-de-sac with sanitation vehicles turning on it. So once this is complete, we should have a good idea of how that product will perform as we move forward. And then we have the Streets Division Initiative. This is a project that Kelly brought to me. We used his maintenance dollars to fund this. He was able to do six quartz or cul-de-sacs. He selected these because they had no utility issues, very little utilities existing, maybe one, one water line that ran in and sewer was provided from, you know, through a backyard or down a side street or something like that. There are streets that typically don't prioritize well in an overall project. We try to spend our dollars on streets that carry more traffic or make connections between areas. And again, the idea behind that is, those are great or used streets. I love my cul-de-sac that I live on, but I realize that paving that for me and my neighbors isn't as big of a benefit as paving the connector street right up from us.
That your company feels the same way after storm.
That's right. And that's, that's correct, right? So we're, we're trying to take the dollars we have available and have the greatest benefit. But we don't, we don't want to forget about those either because they do impact our grading. So Kelly was actually able to put together a project, and he paved, it was right under a mile, so 0.96, I think, was the total length. And he got that done right at, right around $200,000, I think. So very good benefit for what we spent, and definitely cheaper than what we spent on a, on a full capital improvement project. And then we have probably this street that most people are interested in, the DeWitt Street Project. The current rating on every segment of that street is failed. It's really below a 20. The problem is the infrastructure underneath. We have to replace a large area of sewer, actually more sewer than we were originally anticipating. And a part of the challenge is the grade at which that sewer is laid at is almost flat. And so we've talked with, our engineers talked with the state, and they recommended that we take segments and actually go from an eight-inch to a 12-inch, because you can lay a 12-inch sewer line flatter than you can lay an eight-inch. Of course, it does drive up the cost slightly. So we're having to not only redesign that project or upsize some of that project, we're having to permit it and adjust any waterline conflicts that we have with both the water and the stormwater that we'll be doing. And then we have roughly 1,000 linear feet of curb and gutter that we're going to have to replace for drainage as well. And again, this is one of those streets that's completely failed, and in large part to the underground infrastructure. So, and then the portions of this project that aren't included are any areas of sewer that we don't have to replace, but we can line. So we will come back and get that as part of our INI project. So we are trying to split the funding because right now, the current estimate for this project is $2.3 million. That's a 95% design, and I think we're about $800,000 off of what that estimate is in our, in our project.
What are you looking at on that, Tom, letting, letting for bids roughly?
I think we could be ready to, we're, we're getting permits now for the, so we do have to get sewer permits because we're relaying it and we're upsizing it. But I think we could be ready to go to bid in the next couple of months. I think we're pretty close. Of course, Christie might be cringing at home, but.
Sometimes it's fault.
So that's what we're looking at. And we have a really good engineer on this project. They've tried to, we've, we've tried to value engineer as much as this we can because of recognizing the challenges that we have with funding.
Boy, I'm trying to get through my mind. Upsizing portions of the sewer line for me as well. What are you doing? Increasing the capacity for flow?
No, it's because it's, the sewer line is so flat, it doesn't move. So we actually have to go in and jet portions of the sewer line. So as we're replacing, instead of just replacing with eight-inch, because we can't come back and adjust grade, so the only thing we can do is upsize it. So a, a larger sewer line can be laid at a flatter elevation. So that's all we're doing.
So it should flow a little better.
Yes, hopefully, and less maintenance for our people. So what they'll do, we have what we call a hot route or a Friday route, where we have high priority lines. We go in every week and inspect, or we go in and actually jet.
Just, just off the top of my head, I would think that eight-inch with, with less volume, with, the flow would be quicker.
I agree.
You'd think you'd have more, you'd have quicker flow, and it would cause you less problems. If you go to the larger pipe, it's going to be a slower flow, I would.
Seem like it would just sit there longer.
I agree. I'm not an engineer, but.
Not an engineer, yeah.
But I mean, you can, per, per state law, you can lay a 12-inch flatter than you can lay an eight-inch, and you can lay a 15-flatter minimum slope than a 12. I see what you're saying, though. Smaller pipe, right, flow moves faster.
You'd have greater pressure, assuming it's full.
Yeah.
But that may not be the case with this kind of line.
And actually, you probably have more clogging, too.
Along with this is, we have the Bay Shore Project. Bay Shore from Johnson Boulevard, right across the street, from Johnson Boulevard to Park Lane, needs to be resurfaced. The problem is, we have the same issues with sewer in that area. So we're going to have to go through and do much of the same kind of fix, where we're upsizing from an eight to a 12. And then we'll have, again, we'll have to adjust for any waterline conflicts or surface conflicts. And we do have some minor stormwater things there. There's a valley gutter that comes across that we'll have to deal with. So those type of things add to the cost of the project as well. So our current estimate on that project's about $400,000. Some of our future challenges that we have, again, is underground infrastructure. Even if we had enough money to go out and pave every street in the city, some of them would still, DeWitt would last probably four or five years, and it would fail because of the underlying infrastructure. So the underlying infrastructure is going to be a challenge as we move forward. A great example that's come up recently is Doris from North Woods Drive and toward, was that Daniel that cuts across, or Vernon?
Daniel, where you had the big, the big dig out.
Yes.
Relaying some pipe.
So if you go through there, there's a number of utility cuts. I think that, I think that was resurfaced in the last, it may have been slightly more than 10, but it's certainly not one of our oldest resurfaced roads. The problem is, when we were working on that road, we actually got into the valve of the waterline. The waterline's like two feet deep. So in order to do anything else along doors, we would have to go in and completely relay that waterline and lay it at a minimum of three foot, and then come back and resurface. So we end up with a lot of challenges like that as we're moving forward with resurfacing. We are working on some fixes on doors. We're, we're hoping to have some greater capabilities in-house in the very near future that hopefully we can maybe buy us some time on some of these streets that we're having trouble with. One of the things you're going to see in a minute is increasing cost. We've, you know, I showed you that we had $2.2 million of funding for FY25. If you go back to '23, I think that number was about 1.9, right under $2 million. But you'll get a chance to see what costs have done in just a minute. Contractor availability is a, a challenge. We try to vary up our projects. Sometimes we bid out smaller projects, trying to increase the number of people that we can get. And sometimes we bid out larger projects, trying to gain economies of scale. So we've tried. So, we've tried varying different things. Sometimes it depends on who's got what work. So, if DOT, if one of our larger contractors has a lot of DOT work, then sometimes we find it's just better to bid some smaller projects because you get, you know, good-sized companies, but not as large as some of the ones doing DOT work and we get a little bit better price and we can get projects out. The problem is it takes a little longer time because you're bidding multiple projects. On the contrary, if, you know, some of our local people don't have DOT projects, then it's better to just package, like we did, a larger project together and bid out a large project. And the large projects are actually easier to manage. So, you're just coordinate where they're going next. And then, of course, Powellville fund limitations. If you remember, several years ago, they went to a set amount. So, it's in the legislature, you know, they set the amount every year, so that amount can change. If that amount goes up, we may get a little more money. If that amount, if the state needs more money and that amount goes down, we get less money. And then, of course, the ever-street deterioration, right? Streets are going to deteriorate over time. So, I wanted you to have a little bit of a comparison. I apologize, this, this chart's a little bit messy. We had never done Cape Seal before, so I didn't really have anything for us to compare to. I didn't go out and find industry standards because that can vary widely. As you can imagine, DOT gets better pricing than we do because, well, they pay probably four times the amount of streets that we do on a much shorter basis. But, you can see where we stand per mile. So, right now, our first project came back and we're looking at about $156,000 a mile to do that Cape Seal treatment, which is why we're looking at it when you look at what our current method is of mill and overlay. So, that mill an inch and then overlay with one and a half inches. In 2020, that project was $288,000 and that was actual numbers, that was our project. And the 2025 project I just gave you was $458,000 a mile. So, that's how, we did five and a half miles, that's where we came up with our number. And then, the one that's a little bit different is the reconstruction. I used, we didn't, we didn't do any reconstruction in 2020. This includes infrastructure and everything, but we did do some in 2022 and that was actually Brookview Drive. So, we did Brookview and we did Sioux and Seminole in a very short time period, right there between 2022 and 2023. So, those are the numbers that I used to get that 1.6 million dollars. And when you compare that to our estimate for DeWitt Street, you can see that that number is significantly more. And that's not a five-year period, that's actually more like a three-year period. And, you know, as we discussed, Powellville has gone up slightly, but it hasn't gone up even the 60% in the mill overlay that you see. So, that's going to be a challenge as we move forward looking at our streets. You know, construction costs, everybody, we're actually sitting in with the school of government on a capital improvement project course and they're talking about, they talk about funding, they talk about project management, they talk about everything. And they ask how many people had not recently bid a project and had the bid come in over what the engineer's estimate or their estimate was and not a single person could say they hadn't had that happen. So, it's just the volatility of the market that we're dealing with. It's, you know, but I will say that we've had some that have come in significantly less than we were surprised, pleasantly surprised. So, it's hard to tell what drives those numbers. Looking forward, we need to, we're going to complete the '24, '25 project. That'll be complete here in the, in the very near future. Most of those roads are already done. We'll just be cleaning up the outstanding roads that we have. Eaton Drive is one that we're dealing with currently. Eaton has been milled and we're, we're chasing base failures there. It's just breaking through. So, we do have several roads there that we need to complete. We're interested to see what comes out of the Cape Seal project. There will be some education that goes with that. We want to educate our citizens not to do dry turns with their cars. Basically, when they back out of their driveway, turn their steering wheels as they're moving. Don't back out and then crank your wheel all one way so that the wheels slide on the asphalt because all that'll do is just move right through the coating that we put down. So, it will require some education and working with our citizens. Also, some education on what to expect because the chip seal goes down first and it stays like that for a period of time. So, for a while, you're going, you will probably likely receive complaints that they didn't move into the city to live on a gravel road, right? We've all seen that on DOT streets where you have the little rock chips that continually break loose and the great thing is we have a great street sweeper to, to help us take care of some of that. But, we recognize that that's an education process.
Well, the Cape Seal, is it, you have to be kind of selective on what kind, what streets you put it on as far as access is?
Access doesn't seem to be as big of a problem as they're concerned with.
It's a problem.
It's more, it's more about, for them, it's more about how long you can keep that street closed and let it set up. It does better if you let it set up and keep traffic off of it. And the, the other piece is how good of a street you're putting it on. Because Durham has gone to Cape Seal and we toured a lot of the streets in Durham that were doing this. We saw it actually going down as we were there. We saw some that had been done for over five years and some, one of the streets had heavy traffic on it. I mean, you had to be careful crossing the road not to get hit. So, one of the, one of the concerns that we have there is, you know, they aim for those not failed yet streets. So, you're spending money on those fair streets to keep them from becoming poor. But, the challenge is you can't ignore the poor in the failed streets. So, you got to spend money here and here in order to catch up. And I'm going to show you that in just a second. And then, we're going to finish up the engineering for both DeWitt and North Bay Shore. And what we're working on now is prioritizing the streets for FY '27 so that we can get, sorry, FY '26 and '27, sorry. We're prioritizing both '26 and '27 because the amount that we have available now, the streets we've identified outruns the amount that we have for '26. So, we're, we're working on prioritizing and doing utility evaluations on '26 and '27. And then, if you remember, when we brought you the Fugro report the first time, the street condition assessment the first time, we talked about this would be a three-year cycle, which it seems to be kind of industry standard. So, every three years, we would bring back a company to do that. So, that would be in calendar year '26 because we did it in calendar year '23. Actually, we did it in October. So, if we go to the full year, we would be looking at kind of October of '26 for that, for the next assessment. And then, we are looking at other strategies, build that toolbox for street repaving and preservation. And this is why, we, I stole this from roadresource.org. There's a lot of research on this right now. So, you can see in gray, their traditional approach of, you basically let a street fail and then you resurface it and then you let it fail again and you resurface it. What's interesting in this timeline, they've settled on, basically at year 11, it's failed. That's kind of what this has settled on. Every single one, I've looked at this chart from multiple entities, every single one of them is between 10 and 15 years for a road to fail. If you remember what we're doing currently, our roads need to last us closer to like 30. So, that's not saying there's not life left in them as they failed. It just means that that street has essentially failed. The method by spending money early basically shows that, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of treatment. So, you spend less money upfront with things like microseal, cape seal, crack seal, and you do overlays later and spread those out. So, as you can see, what I liked about the, this chart is on the right side where they call it an optimized strategy, they actually look at carrying out a street 30 years before they overlay it, which is closer to, to where we're at, right? So, if, if we can figure out how to spend our money and bridge some of those new streets that we have now while focusing on rehabbing our other streets that need to be rehabbed, maybe we can keep the streets that we have now from getting to the level like DeWitt Street, which would be our goal. In some cases, we won't be able to avoid it because the infrastructure fails underneath. But, in other cases, we might be able to. And that's all I have.
Question. You ever considered rubber paving?
Like they use on tracks? We, we haven't. We follow a lot of what DOT does because DOT doesn't use a lot of it. I don't know the advantages or disadvantages of it.
I would wonder if it would be better with weather changes.
I don't know. I can research it though. I'm always interested.
Mr. Hanson, I have a question with regards to the Powellville. Do you perceive that with the increased usage of electric vehicles, that the General Assembly might possibly put revenues into one pot with EV usage as well as the gas-related issues with the Powellville and then distribute to counties? Because I can easily see how EV is going to start to rise and other cars are going to start to decrease. Thus, you're going to have limited funding, continue limited funding with Powellville. So, is there any conversation with regards to the North Carolina General Assembly and where they stand on this?
I don't know where they stand, but I can tell you is there is a lot of conversation around this. Because they, they recognize that the gas tax is not what it used to be because of things like EV. So, then you start looking at, is it based on miles traveled? How do you, is there, right now, they're charging an EV tax and I think they're going to be forced to go that direction as it catches popularity.
The only problem with that is, is you're only, only your North Carolina residents are paying for roads then.
That's correct.
Right now, with the gas tax, anybody that gases up, going interstate, like commerce and all, they're paying cash tax.
That's correct.
And EVs are heavier, so they do more damage to the roads.
Yes.
It's one of...
And, and, and right now, according to what I read, EVs are going down as far as purchasing.
Right now?
Right now. That's what the gas does.
Gas is cheaper.
But, it's, it's going to be an ongoing challenge and there has been much discussion over how you monitor them. You know, the idea is you pay based on the miles driven, right? So, the gas tax works, what works well because theoretically, to drive more miles, you have to put gas in your car. So, the more you drive, the more gas you put in, so the more taxes you pay. Unless you're like me and you drive a truck, right? So, then I don't get as good a gas mileage, you don't get as good a gas mileage either. So, we pay a little bit more for our fair share, but when you have an EV vehicle that does not have to gas up, then you run into, how do you, how do you judge those miles driven and what's their fair share?
Now, they are charged, charged a fee.
Yes.
It's a lot higher than a regular vehicle each year at registration time.
At registration.
It's supposed to make up for some of that difference, but it doesn't make up for all of that difference.
That's right.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Of course, I spent a lot of time on this subject, working with the NPO and the Transportation Department. This is a problem that's been going on for the past 25 years since I've been in this business and there's been multiple attempts at basically wholesale changes to the way that we generate revenue for roads. Over the years, they chipped away at the problem. You know, you talked about the electric vehicle fee. There's also been the introduction of sales tax on various types of services related to vehicles. They've eliminated, they've modified some of the indexing that happens with the motor fuel tax. But, Senator Lazar, right now, I'm speaking with him multiple times, is very serious about what's the next, you know, what's the next phase of the motor fuel tax. We're not sure what's going to happen with EVs. At one point in time, we thought that they were just going to explode, you know, and that they were going to be nothing but EVs tearing up the roads all over the place, but that's not coming to fruition. But, he is actively working on that.
One thing it could do is keep the gas tax lower in North Carolina than it is in Virginia and South Carolina, then you would capture some of that interstate traffic.
It's the same problem we had with South Carolina, right? It's going to require a revolutionary solution.
Oh, yeah. Let me get the 21st Century Transportation Study that was done.
There's the Blue Ribbon Panel, there was, I mean, there's been at least...
There's a lot of different recommendations.
Seven, eight, 10 of those since I've been in the transportation business. But, I mean, it's getting to the point because the costs are going like this, the revenues are going like this, you know, it's going to have to be addressed and I think it's...
Something globally is just not North Carolina.
It's not just North Carolina, it's the entire United States. And in fact, it's also, you know, the, at the federal level too, with the Highway Trust right there. I mean, it's, it's just a complete, it demands a complete overhaul.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. Kelly and his crew deserve a lot of credit. They do, you know, one thing I didn't mention is the maintenance that's done on our 166 miles is done with 11 people. So, our Powellville people, I mean, there's 30 in streets, but our, you know, the bulk of those are focused on stormwater. So, we maintain the streets with 11 people.
In a perfect world, we could make every street, right? Perfect. But, I always tell people, a lot of times, if we did that, we wouldn't be able to afford to do that.
Yeah, that's for sure.
At what cost?
Because it would be astronomical.
Greatest amount, best streets in the world with nobody driving on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, you have a one second?
I do, yes, sir. I have a couple items, Mayor, I want to share with you today. The first one that we have is our police department, our fire department came together for a fundraiser to support our students for the upcoming school year. They hosted a kickball game. So, what started as a simple fundraiser turned into an epic battle between the police and fire. You know, we had recommended that they band together and they integrate teams and there's something about bringing them together that the two guys in the middle, there's a guy wearing a red hat, he's obviously with the fire department and there's a guy wearing a police-only hat next to him and he's with the police department. They had a good time, Mayor, we had a good turnout. People showed up and brought school supplies to support this fundraiser, which is the real purpose. What we're doing is we're getting integrated into the community. It's all part of a bigger picture for how we not only celebrate National Night Out for this time of year, but our police and fire stay active within the community consistently and they always do something to, to be able to have a positive impact with our school system. This looks like potentially, this was a torn ACL or a pulled hamstring. So, there are some impacts.
Don't look good, no.
But, someone is going to first, which is probably also a hamstring injury. But, they look like they had a good time at the end of this, even though that guy in the red hat is smiling. The scoreboard... The scoreboard said that the police department won 5-4. The fire department did file an appeal and the police department immediately launched an investigation, so we can't talk about it in public. So until the investigation's over, that's the last comment you can have, mayor. But as always, this is the Recreation Department, this is the Parks Department, this is police and fire, and all of our teams sharing something that in our community is an opportunity to be out and stay involved and stay integrated. Tonight, now since we've been sitting here, it sounds like there's a lot of rain falling from the heavens, but we are scheduled right now for Running With the Law and this is another awesome event for us, a companion to the National Night Out, which we are going to have here in a couple of months. But we've changed this location. At six o'clock, they were doing a kickoff at Riverwalk Park. Might have been a little wet, but we have tons of officers. I think as of this morning, Terrell, we had about 500 people.
About 500 people signed up.
We had, we had 500 people signed up for Running With the Law. Most of you people, we signed you up. So if you get out of the meeting here by seven o'clock, we expect you over to Riverwalk to start running.
We can do it two handlets.
This is the, this is the 12th year of this event and it's very exciting for us to have, to have the event and to have the benefits to go with it. So tonight, if they are able to have it, it'll start at seven o'clock over here at Riverwalk Park. And so we're excited to see it, mayor. So this is just our police and our fire staying active within the community and giving us an opportunity to engage with our public safety personnel on a level that is, that's unique and it opens us up for that dialogue that we always want in, in our community. So very exciting. Hope you can make it and get to the starting line, mayor. I was told to drop you off right there at the line. That's all I have, sir.
They're going to have a break in the rain here in a few minutes.
Well, I'm listening, but I'm not feeling too confident about it.
Changing to dancing in the rain.
Close session. All right. We get to entertain a question to go out of regular session and go with closed session.
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second.
Third.
All the favor, sit down, say hi. All the, make sure that.